Your first name doesn't get listed, your specialty. Everybody else's is. Call the regular city council meeting to order this June 5th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Any additions to the agenda? Jamie?
If you want to add my audit report, he's not here.
There's somebody in the bathroom.
Yeah, somebody in the bathroom.
In his suit.
I guess probably him.
I don't know who that is, but.
Okay, where that is, so it's already there. So we're good, okay. No additions to the agenda, all right, we'll move on. Citizens' comments. Yeah, we'll go ahead. Carolyn.
We are working on a grant application to, the same grant application that provided the kind of core funding for the grocery store through the US Department of Health and Human Services. Motivation for that program is to create employment opportunities and I kind of see what's going to help that grocery store stay successful 10, 20 years down the road is if we have unemployment in St. John and can stabilize or grow the population. So we see some ways to gather resources to try to achieve that, that's what we're trying to do. So the opportunity that we are developing would utilize, honestly, we were initially talking about trying to build an additional building right next to the, what I call the incubator building, where the pharmacy is now. We've kind of recalibrated here the last couple of days and are saying, we think we can renovate the space that's on the downstairs part of that building and achieve it more economically and practically, be able to utilize more of the grants for lower expenses. But we'd create a kind of a training and shared workspace for call center jobs or remote jobs. Our grant funding would pay for the facility itself, we'd be actually developing something here in St. John as well as one in Stafford, leasing a building in their downtown area. And it would, within that space, have an area for doing remote training, so we'd be a telelink, we'd have set up for that, space cables, computers. We'd have a call center area where there'd be cubicles, again with the appropriate equipment for someone to be able to use. Meeting room for, just kind of a conference room for meeting up to like maybe 12 people. And some individual office space. In this case, when we use this building, we're not going to have a whole lot of that, but we will have at least one area that we can have as a separate office space for someone that has a position that requires that kind of privacy. And some of the positions that we have, maybe they're dealing with, say, social security numbers or something, you don't want an environment where people can look over your shoulder. So we wouldn't be able to do this on our own without someone with a lot more knowledge of this industry than we have. And some of those who have been leading the Circles program have had connection in other towns with this program called Digital Works. And we feel like they would add a lot to this by having the right kind of training to help people compete in these jobs, as well as the connections to companies. So again, these are remote jobs, it's not as if we have one company coming in and providing, you know, developing a call center. What we're doing is we're helping people have the right skills to compete for a number of jobs that are available from companies that are hiring either remote employees that are direct, 72 waged employees, or there's also a number of ways that you can develop 1099 contract work. And so, in our grant application, we play facilities, equipment, with a five-year contract, or five-year grant period. We would be acting as economic development as the facility manager, a certain amount of that offset with some of our staff time to perform that. And utilities and some indirect costs in over a five-year period of time that adds up. So what we're asking for is just a letter of support, not any kind of financial contribution from the city. We think we can get it covered with this, and it doesn't require a match. But they do score something in the area of letters of support, and they do specifically ask for letters of support from government entities showing that this is consistent with your local government's goals. So again, it's all about local job creation, and I think we talked about that a lot. So I drafted a letter, you know, as a means to have something to start with. It's usually, I think, easier for you to look at something specific and see whether you agree with the way that's presented or not. But it did also ask in that scoring criteria for the letters of support of your specific, you know, the writer's specific experience with the applying entities' experience in job creation. And so we did talk a fair amount about the cooperation between the city on the grocery store project and that thing, so. You have any questions?
Any questions? Are there any objections to allowing me to sign a letter of support?
I think that's great. Fine with it.
Okay. All on her head, ready to go for you, Carolyn.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I told you I'd sign it. It's just got to be correct. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Other citizens' comments, we'll move on. Consent agenda, approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, May 15th, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 060518 in the amount of $128,031.63, petty cash $470.80. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second by Brian Sanders. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Currys?
Five, four, zero. I wasn't at the meetings.
Before, before. Okay. Okay, moving on, audit report.
How are you guys this evening?
Good.
First of all, I'd like to apologize again for not being here at the main meeting, I had a family emergency come up, so again, I appreciate your understanding on that, so. There'll be a couple loose letters at the front that we are going to start with. The first one is the communication of significant deficiencies. There's one for Pam, too. Again, with all cities of this size, we do have that lack of segregation duties due to the small number of employees involved in the bookkeeping function. We just recommend that you continue to, as a council, review the financial reports, the bills, things of that nature, raise questions to help mitigate that lack of segregation of duties, all right? The second letter is the communication with those charted governance. Things that would be in here, if there was new accounting policies that went into place, if there was disagreements between us and management on how to handle accounting policy. If it came to our attention that you were in essence getting a second opinion from another auditing firm, we did not note anything during the period covered by the audit. There were just a few audit adjustments, that's on the back of page two. The first one was to reclass the posting of the WIP memorial interest, it inadvertently got posted to the general fund instead of Fund 14, so that was just to get moved, the interest earned on that CD to the WIP memorial fund, and to adjust the payroll liabilities to actual. And then the last five pages is a counterrepresentation letter, this is a letter addressed from you to us, just stating that you made available all the information that was requested, summary of the mail, things of that nature. So, any questions on the letters before we jump over to the audit report itself? All right, so if you'll turn to page one or two of the audit report, this is our opinion on the financial statement for the year end of December 31st, 2017. We have issued an unmodified opinions, that basically states that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting which you guys have elected to use, okay? Page three and four, this is going to give you a broad overview of the financial activity for the year, and also shows your compliance with the cash basis law of the state of Kansas, which states that all funds must end the year with either a zero or positive cash balance. So if you look at the column labeled pending unencumbered cash balance, that's where we would be looking at for anything, make sure all funds end the year with either a zero or positive cash balance. And as you can see, all your funds did, so there were no cash violations during the year. And at the bottom of the page, it shows you where your total cash balance is, between your checking accounts, savings accounts, petty cash, certificates of deposits, and so forth. All right, starting on page five of the notes of the financial statement, we're not going to hit each one of these. If you'll turn to page seven, middle of the page, note three compliance with Kansas statutes. We did note one statutory violation during the period covered by the audit, and that dealt with the principal and interest payments on the general obligation bonds not being remitted to the state in a timely fashion. By statute, they're required to be to the state treasurer 20 days prior to the maturity date. So when you get that invoice in the mail, you don't have very many days turnaround before you need to have that payment sent off to meet the 20-day requirement, so. I think we were only.
Yeah, that was not related in transition, so we.
During our time, our office was transitioning.
And that invoice, it's in pretty small print, too, it's easy to miss. So again, not a big deal, visited with Jamie and Pam about that, and that's, I think we'll have that corrected, so. Turn page eight, nine, this lists all the debt that's issued in the city's name. We've got your general obligation bond, your capital leases, your KDHE loans. The top half of the first page shows you the various information regarding interest rates, data issue, your data final maturity. As you can see, a lot of your leases and your general obligation bonds are going to be paid off here in the next two to three years. And then the KDHE loans for the nitrate removal plant, we still got until 2033. And then on the top half of the right page shows you the current year activity, reductions, payments, balance end of the year, and then the interest paid. And then the bottom half of the page shows you the maturity requirements for five years, and then five-year increments after that. So if you're ever curious about what's still got paid, what's coming up, this is where you would go to look, okay? All right, we're going to skip over the rest of the notes and jump forward to page 14 and 15. This schedule shows your compliance with the budget law of the state of Kansas, which states that no expenditures can exceed your adopted budget. So if you look at your variance over/under column, anything in parentheses or zero is good, all expenditures came in under budget during the year, so no budget violations. All right, the next several pages are the individual fund financial statements, again, I don't want you guys to be here all night, so we're not going to hit these in great detail. I just kind of wanted to show you some later on tonight when you're flipping through it. What it will do is give you more detail of the revenue expenditures for the current year with comparison to the prior year, and then comparing the current year revenues and expenditures versus the budget by those line items. So again, this will kind of see if, you know, certain revenues went up or down, expenditures, things of that nature. And we will hit some of those when we jump back to the graphs, all right? So now we are going to jump forward several pages to page 41. And these are the sort of the graphs that we like to provide, just to kind of give you some trend analysis, to kind of see what the city's done for the last four to three years, you know. So we can always show the years that we've audited. So the first one shows you what your unencumbered cash balance has done in your selected funds, we give them your general fund, the city sales tax, your capital improvement equipment reserve fund, your utility funds. This way you can see if cash balances have been remaining steady, increasing, decreasing, things of that nature. The next two funds, our next two graphs, excuse me, deal with your general fund revenues and expenditures. The first one shows you your general fund revenues broke out by the major function taxes, that's going to be like your ad valorem tax, motor vehicle tax, so forth, intergovernmental, that's sales tax, franchise fees, licenses fees and permits, others are going to be like reimbursed expenses, miscellaneous things of that nature, and then the operating transfers, the transfers that you make into the general fund from the utility funds. Okay, then the next page is just like that, but dealing with your general fund expenditures broke out by your major departments. As you can see, most of it stays pretty steady, we do have some spikes here and there, especially like with the WIP community center, that's due to the roof repair, the non-departmental, that was the grocery store expenditures, and your share of that CDBG, the side water rant, so. All right, the next three graphs are comparing your revenues versus expenditures in utility funds. We like to provide these graphs so that you can see if the revenues you're bringing in are covering the operating costs and other expenses that come out of utility funds. You kind of use this as an analysis, if the rates that you're charging are, you know, sufficient, or something you need to look at. So again, the first one deals with your water and light fund. The next one would be your sewer fund, and then solid waste. And then the last two graphs come off your budget. The first one shows you what your assessed valuation's done over the last five years. You guys have had just shy under of a 20% increase in assessed valuation the last five years. And then with that in mind, with the evaluation going up, levying about the same amount of tax dollars, just trying to stay under the tax lid, you've seen a subsequent drop in your mil rate over the last five years because of that, so. I know that's a lot of information, short amount of time, you have any questions, comments, concerns? Well, again, if you have time, look at it later tonight, if you have questions that pop up, do not hesitate, Jamie's got my contact information, be happy to answer any questions. I do, I agree, that is a lot of information, short amount of time, so, you know, sometimes I joke when we say that you'll be reading this later tonight. If you've got small children, you need to put them to sleep, read them the notes, they'll be out in no time. But otherwise, yes, again, please do look at more detail if something comes up that you want clarification on. More likely Jamie and Pam will be able to answer the questions, but if they want some clarification, or just to make sure that they're, you know, giving you the right information, I'll be happy to answer any questions as well, so.
Per department, for a community this size, are expenditures per department out of the general fund in line, or some of them out of line?
That's a tough question to answer, because every city's different, I mean, every city's different, you know, because, you know, not every city has a community center like you do, or if they do have a community center, it's not city-operated. Some of our cities, apologize, I don't handle this heat very well, so, some of our cities, they don't have their own police department, they've contracted that out with the county where they don't have their own police staff, they just, they pay a set contract to, for the police department. You know, some cities, you know, with street repairs, they may not have as much streets to maintain as you guys, or they may have more, so. You know, that's really a difficult question to answer, how you compare it to other cities. All I can tell you is that these audit reports do get filed with the state of Kansas, and those are all online. So if you, you can always go to that website, and I can give Jamie that information on where to go to get that. You can look at cities around you, or, you know, cities that you know are size, and just, maybe that would be a good way, because their audit reports would be right there, and you'd be able to look to see what do they spend on fire department, street department, police department, things of that nature.
It's kind of appears that our revenues are going down from water and light, but our expenditures are going up?
Well, I don't, I don't know so much that the revenues are going down. Now, we do, we did have some major expenditures in water and light due to the automated meter reading system that you just put in. Again, and then the other thing is that you guys do do that transfer annually from the water and light surplus monies from your water and light to your general fund. So again, you know, if looking, I know the cash balances in that water and light fund may be one of the things that you guys have been keeping your eye on and looking at. So there are always, but unfortunately with that transfer to the general fund, you can say, well, let's just not make that transfer to the general fund, we'll just make up the, that revenue other ways in the general fund. Unfortunately, with the tax lid law the way it is right now, that's not an easy thing to do, you just can't increase taxes that great without going over the tax lid. If you do go over the tax lid, then it's subject to the election requirement. And I was just at a budget workshop, and we were kind of curious, and they just said, last year, with the first year of the tax law, there was three cities that went to election. Only one of them passed, the other two failed, so. You know, it's not one of those things, unless you're out beating doors, telling people exactly why they need to vote yes to this, if they just get a ballot in the mail that says, you approve an increase in tax revenues, yes or no? I think we all have a pretty good idea how that might get answered, if they don't understand why this needs to be done, so.
Do you have any recommendations at all? At all, after knowing our numbers?
Again, like I said, I mean, I think I did visit with Jamie, Pam, and I think your utility department superintendent, he's the same way with the drop in the water and light unencumbered cash balance. Again, that's, that's just kind of on a commission, what you're comfortable with, with having. Now, we do have those reserve funds, that's, we've got set aside, but again, those have been set aside for future repairs and maintenance. So again, it's like you, as a commission, you've got to, or council, sorry, I was at a meeting last night, they're a commission. So as a council, you've got to determine what are we comfortable with as cash reserves in our utility funds? And are we there? And if we're not, what plans do we need to implement to do that? I mean, the options are, do we raise rates, or do we look at cutting costs? If we cut costs, can we do that first and foremost before we look at raising rates? So again, you know, looking at, I think all in all, everything else is in pretty good shape. Like I said, the main one thing I wanted to reiterate is to make sure you keep your eye on that water and light fund. With, you know, the big, you had that big expenditure for the water meter reading fund, and, you know, you can maybe take a wait, see attitude, to see if that's going to start slowly building itself back up. But it may not build up as fast as you want it to be, so again, that would be about my only thing, concern really.
Any other questions?
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to housing violations.
Jeff got me some pictures here of the current condition, what, did you take these last week, Jeff?
Yeah, last Thursday, I think.
So there's those.
Jeff, what was your thoughts on that property?
You know, they can all be repaired, it's just a matter of how much you want to put into it, you know? The building does need quite a bit of repair, but it's, it's not that it's not repairable, I mean, as far as that goes, it just depends on the amount they want to invest in it.
So you'd say that it's structurally, just.
I think it's probably structurally sound, you know, I think there's some spots in it that are going to have to be repaired, but I think when you get down to the framing, I think the framing's okay yet. Might take a little tweaking here and there, but I think all, and all the framing's still in decent shape, but. The exterior, the roof, you know, the roof on the, on the lean-to, on the porch, the windows, things like that, you know, I mean, there's, there's some considerable cost there to repair them, so. It's up to the council, you know what they want to do.
I do know, her and I talked before Gugli, and she, I don't know if she's still at this point, but they were talking about maybe demoing it and bringing in a whole new building. So I don't know if that's where she's still at, but that was at one point.
We just talked about this last meeting.
Well, the 105, the southwest, what, what we had talked about is what we could do, what we could take action on since no one was here. And you said we didn't, we couldn't testify to the property itself, we needed Jeff's pictures and his testimony on whether or not we were going to place it on a list to demolish it, or allow them more time, and you said that we didn't.
What's the name on 105, say?
Elga Deo.
Sorry.
Elga Deo. Elga Jean. Do you want my folder?
Solid waste awareness. Yeah, where's your folder?
I think at that time consensus of council was to go ahead and place it on the list, and that if the property owner had done something before that, then, okay. But I think that's kind of where we were at last meeting.
We had roof construction on top of the list to make the property.
Initially, we, that's what we kind of thought, we said we'd leave it on the list to let them do something with the roof, and at the following meeting, we would go ahead, or the 60 days, or whatever it was, we would see what work had been done, then we would make another decision based on, did they make progress, what do we want to do from here? Well, at that meeting, we didn't have any representation from the property owner at that time, so we had said, well, could we go ahead and place it on the list to possibly demolish it? And John said, well, we need their testimony as the superintendent or someone else.
Discussion regarding the need to hire a bulldozer and.
Yes.
Right.
We just said we'd look at it this meeting, because she could be here this meeting, not last meeting.
I could sneak up behind you.
Do you want to address the council?
Yeah, I would say, I would say we would kind of like to know what, what your intentions with the property are at this time.
Okay, first of all, I need to apologize about last council meeting. I was ready to come up here, and I had a major emergency, and couldn't make it. And if anybody's seen my dad gimping around, you'll know what that emergency was. But I have done a lot. I have come to the fact that the house is not structurally sound down in the southwest corner, and I am going to demolish it. There are things in the store that are usable for me that I want to get out, but I needed more storage to put those things in, like my shelving that's good, and my vegetable bins, and those kind of things. I had my first building placed today, I was so happy. We're coming along, it may not be real visible here, but we are making progress. And when the veggies come in, the restaurant and store will probably be ready to go. I would also like to request, I've had a hard time getting estimates. For some reason, all of the contractors are pretty busy. And I'm doing this on a disability check, and I was wondering, could I get an estimate from the city on what it would take? You've got the machinery, you've got the manpower. Could I maybe get an estimate on what you would charge me? I've called the fire department to see about them doing a training day on burning it, and that was a no because of the asbestos in the shingles. And I understand that, but I do have a question. What happens if a house with an asbestos roof catches on fire, and you have no training to deal with it? I mean, it was just something I thought about at the time.
That's all state, I mean, we have no control over whether or not we can burn a structure down or not, that's state.
I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just doing an FYI for me. Okay.
So your, your intentions are to demolish part of the structure, or the entire structure?
The entire house is. The entire house is going. And Jeff, are you the one that does major inspection?
The only thing I can do is look at the outside of it. I can't tell you anything else. I'm not qualified to do that.
All I care about is the basic bottom structure. But at this point, I'm just, I've faced the fact. I'm ready to let go and I'm ready to move on. And like I say, I am moving on. And it may not look like it there, but I have gone a long distance from when all of this started.
I don't think the city can give you an estimate as to what it would cost for them to remove it because I think at that point, then they would have to follow Katie AG rules on removal of that house. I think the only thing the city can do is say, give you a deadline for removal of the personal property. And then after that point, the city is going to elect to tear it down on their own. Which is kind of a backwards way of getting to what you want, but.
Yeah, because it's in both interests, the community and mine, to get it down. But it's hard to afford on a thousand dollars a month.
I mean, it would be, it would be placed on the, be assessed against the property, whatever it costs to remove the property.
Could we come to an agreement on a price right now and remove it that way?
Because then you're in the business of removing houses.
We can't be in the business of removing houses.
I mean, doesn't Stafford, I heard Stafford does something like they charge $500 or something like that? Can they remove it, done and over with?
No, that doesn't mean Stafford's doing it right. I mean, the city is saying, Pride just had this issue with houses that burned down. In one neighborhood, they lost two houses and they ran into the same issue because asbestos shingles and everything else.
What's council want to do?
So, are you talking, you want, you're wanting to demolish the north part of that? Is that right, or the south part?
The south part is definitely going down. That southwest part of that house, I have checked it out. It is sinking. The concrete on it isn't worth the amount of money I would have to spend to jack it up, still to level it in, re-cement it. I need to check and make sure that the septic is filled in because I know the water pipes were under the house and it was on a cement foundation. And that southwest corner is really sinking. And I know the septic is on that corner too. So, the house is a done deal. And I imagine I'll let the store go too. That's what I was asking Jeff about, maybe inspecting my foundation.
I can't do that. I can't give you, I can't, I'm not an engineer. I can't give you any kind of a structural estimate of how good it is.
Okay.
And aren't these all connected?
No, no, they are not. They look like they are.
There's a gap, there's a small gap in between the, the front store and the, the house.
And I know I definitely want the back end of the store down. I have never liked the way they added that on to that building. My water lines broke back there every winter. And I want the back end of it taken out and I'll either replace it or do something different there. But what's there at the back is definitely going. I want to save my shelves though. My shelves look like the day I painted them and I can put them in the store for like canned goods and that kind of thing. I can use them to build other shelves.
I mean, John, is there anything we can do to help out with the city? I mean, financially, I mean, because it's a nice work to the city and the way it looks now, even though they've done improvements, isn't acceptable to me. I think, is there anything we can do to get it down?
Give them a timeframe to get stuff removed and then just either pay to have it tore down or tear it down ourselves.
They were ordered to make repairs or remove the facility and, and at some point you decide that it's not, or sufficient time has lapsed and, and they have not done what they, as judge and jury, what you ordered them to do. But I, I mean, I, I think, I see no, nothing wrong with saying, you know, it's the council's position that we're going to go ahead and, and remove it and you've got this amount of time to, to tear it down. I say, I will say, it is considerably more cheaper for you guys to do it than to hire somebody who's going to put on plastic and hang sheets of plastic to keep asbestos from flying.
Yeah, when we get down to tearing it down, where do we come up with the price? What to put on the tax?
Whatever it costs to tear it down. Your hours, your labor, your trucks, your disposal fees.
Yeah, money pays and disposal, disposal fees. And I guess the fire department, sometimes they go out there in situations and kind of wets it down to keep the dust from flying out. So, whatever, you know, they spend and do so.
One of my estimates that I got, it was going to cost me $800 just to knock the buildings down. Then I have to, but, but then I have to pay a whole different crew to come in and do the cleanup and the haul off and the?
Usually they'll do that first before it's knocked down to shore over the shingles and that.
That one house was like $6,000, wasn't it?
The one, $6,500 on the south end of town. And I think it was 60, it was $6,000 out on Fifth Street to have it tore down.
Yeah, $800 is cheap compared to?
Jeff, what are your thoughts on that property and your crew being able to take care of that?
You know, in order to get the road working, stuff down, it'd be fall before we could do it. I mean, I don't see any way we could get it done before then. I have talked to Darren out at the landfill and they will take, they will take it as, as building waste, you know, by the truckload. They won't take anything from the interior. You know, if there's furniture or whatever the case might be inside of it. But as far as the structure itself, they will take the structure.
I have the big guy.
Getting it in the truck and getting it out there. I assume we'll just be charged so much a load like any other contractor would be to haul it in there. So, yeah, I would guess, I would guess the weather's probably going to get cool before because we probably won't see oil until, you know, mid, late September. I don't suppose, the law usually has to slow down until, you know, football season somewhere in there. So, I'd say it's going to be October before we can take it down at least.
Is council comfortable with waiting that long to, for the city to take care of it? Or would you possibly explore paying someone else to come in and get it done now? Or what are your thoughts?
I would say, give them a timeframe of when to have their stuff out if they can afford to tear it down and we seek bids in the meantime to what it's going to cost to have it removed.
And maybe after those bids, you decide to?
And then you make the decision whether we wait till October to tear it down or whether we pay someone upfront to have it tore down and then out of the way.
So, basically, the decision today would be, we're going to give you X number of days to remove the property and the city has decided to go ahead and proceed. However, the city decides to proceed is really how the city's business.
I want it down within the next two weeks.
That won't happen with the city. I mean, you would have to pay for that if that's how you want it done. Because I mean, it's going to take longer.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I know you want it down. I've accepted the fact. I'm ready to get it done and move on.
She just doesn't want to end up with a $10,000 bill that's going to be assessed to her property taxes, which she's not going to be able to pay, and then somebody's going to be able to take the property away from her. She's not wanting to lose the property. She understands that the buildings need to come down.
Sure.
She, she doesn't want to lose the property itself.
Sure.
And that's what will happen.
That's not the, the point of this process at all. We, we have never at any point, this is to get the building cleaned up. It has never been about changing the ownership of the property.
Would she be able to know what the bid is?
She could come to a meeting when the bids are revealed to the chosen.
I mean, that's the thing. I mean, if, if we decide to bid it out and they say it's going to cost $6,000, that $6,000 would be applied to the property taxes on it.
And that has been the amount of our previous ones.
The previous ones. Now, if we decide to do it and it's $3,000, that's still what gets applied to the property taxes.
Regardless if we do it or we have someone do it, that, that amount's going to go on.
In this situation is to have you guys hire somebody to do it. It's kind of a, if you're not going to do it, we're going to do it kind of thing. But once the city decides that the city's going to take over that task, the city gets to take over that task and do it however the city wants or however the city, whatever the best way the city determines to do so.
Right, she understands that. She's just wanting to know if you guys would be willing to work with her in, in, in the process of it.
And I need to go as cheaply as I can.
Sure, sure. I mean, I certainly don't want, I certainly don't want you to lose your property over it. But also on the other side, as the property owner, you're responsible for that property. And if you can't maintain it and keep it up, it will eventually have to come down. And if you can't afford that, that's just part of it too.
Will those taxes, $3,000 or $6,000, all be due at one whack?
It's, it's really, it's something that you would work out with the county treasurer because it, it's taxed, it's attached to your, the property taxes, okay?
I know.
You know, sometimes the, the county treasurer takes pain that's uncomfortable. I don't know if that stops them from doing a tax sale, but?
Yeah, the next time the tax sale comes up is when it'll be auctioned off.
I don't know if that's actually?
In the highest bidder.
Usually it's?
I won't entertain any more comment from anyone, okay? Except for the property owner. So, this is, this is meant to be an easy transition. Try to do the best we can for everybody. So, I'm not entertaining any comment from anyone. If I hear any, you're going to be asked to leave, please. John, anything else?
No, that's all.
What's council want to do at this time?
Just proceed with, give them the allowable time and if it's not torn down, we will tear it down.
But do you think a respectable amount of time for you to be able to get it done, get your things out of it, so that if we were going to get it torn down, your stuff wouldn't be destroyed?
Well, I'm planning on having my things out of there, like I say, pretty quick. I have my first building delivered today.
Okay.
That's my extra storage.
Sure.
I'm ready to move them out.
Okay, okay.
And pull the shelves and put that in storage.
Okay.
And then I am ready to tear it down. I need to level ground. I need to set up, I need to dig up the septic because the year I bought it, they went, they changed from septic to city sewer. And that could be another reason why it's sinking there. I need to level that off and then I'll be able to put other buildings where the house and the store are.
What's council think a reasonable amount of time would be then, based on what she's told us today? What would you be willing to?
I was looking at the calendar here. I mean, 60 days out would be our August 7th meeting. Actually, it's more than 60 days, but that or even the 1st of September. I would rather allow her some time to tear it down than
Sure.
us have to spend $5,000 or $6,000 or whatever.
Quite honestly, the thing is, is I know you're concerned about the, the amount that would get charged back to your taxes and you would possibly lose your property. We don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen. I wouldn't want that to happen to me. So, really, the only way to keep that from happening is by you finding someone to do it for you. And I know contractors are busy. I know it's going to cost a lot. But if you have a bill or a loan or a whatever with someone else to pay them off and get it done, that may be the best solution for you. Because we can't help, whatever the cost is to tear it down, going against your tax law. We just can't. That's the way it goes. And we, I won't have to happen to you, but that's just the way it, it happens. So, if we're going to tear it down, that's what's going to happen. And not because we want it to, it's just, it is what it is. So, I mean, what, what's the date?
I mean, you got, August 7th would be the, would be basically eight weeks. And September 4th would be 12.
So, we would, we would obligate that we would not tear it down before that date?
I mean, and that would go ahead and get us time to seek out bids if we want to?
And that would give you time to maybe work out a deal with someone to get it taken care of yourself?
I think it needs to be a motion to proceed and then with the understanding that the city's not going to have any contractor or itself is not going to?
Do anything else until August 7th.
Until that date. So, that would allow you up until August 7th to maybe work something out with, with a contractor, with a bank or with a whatever, so you can get it taken care of and not lose your property. That would probably be the best solution for you. But after that point?
Is, is till August 7th enough time for you to do some research and before we ever make a decision?
I've got two estimates now. I only need one more. And then I'll choose from the three of them, see who will work with me on payment.
Sure.
The best, and then it's gone.
Okay.
And the building I moved in today is about that far from being paid off. And then I'm ready to get another building. And I'm starting the new buildings on the far end of the, of the property because I don't want all that dust from demolition getting all over my new stuff.
To do our first meeting.
Well, I just, I just want to reiterate that we're not out, out to get, get you or, or your property or anything like that. We want to work with you best we can. I think we've shown that here by possibly, you know, not doing anything until that August 7th date potentially and allowing you enough time to get it fully taken care of yourself. Because that's the last thing I want to do is, is have your property in jeopardy. I mean, that, it's your property and we're trying to be willing to work with people. And I think, I think that's what's most important. So, by your motion?
What I'll do, we need to?
Motion is to proceed with removal of the structure if it's not done so by August 7th.
Okay.
And you can direct, or mayor can direct Jamie to solicit bids to do so.
Okay, I'd make a motion to proceed with removal of the building no sooner than August 7th. And at that time, we'll review bids and see the progress of it at that point in time.
I was really wanting to work with making that store a historical building. It's been there over 125 years. It was an important building in this city.
Okay.
Jamie, if you could put in minutes that I'm going to add some of this stuff.
So, I have the motion on the table. And I have a second. Like Christie, any other discussion, council? All in favor? All opposed? Carries five O. And if you have any, if you have any further questions throughout this time, give us a call here. See what we can do.
I haven't been shy in that area.
Sure, sure. So, please, we'll, we'll continue to work with you on this.
I'm going to be chasing you around because I need to know how long I have with these demolition permits. I need to know exactly what kind of permits. I need to know exactly what kind of permits.
Sure. And we can handle that. And we can handle that outside of the meeting if you wanna come in or, or call in.
That's why I pointed to her.
Sure. We can get your.
I'm on vacation.
We'll get you taken care of. We'll get you taken care of. Thank you.
Uh-huh. And thank you for understanding about last council. Why couldn't be here?
It's quite all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to department head and committee reports. Grand administrator Lisa Cornwell.
I don't have anything from her.
Is there anything anybody wanted Jamie to relay to Lisa at this time? Nope. Nope. Okay. Moving on. Police chief, Adam Saylor.
Um, I got a couple of things this evening. Um, the first one is, um, we had a, a good number of citizens in town that expressed interest in, uh, participating with the police department and starting a neighborhood watch program. So we had a first community meeting, uh, last night and got the ball rolling on that. Where, um, today I did get the, the actual registration done, um, through the, neighborhood watch is a program that was a store we started by the National Sheriff's Association out in California. Um, but kinda how that works is getting the registration set up to where people can find it, you know, on the internet. It, it states that we are a neighborhood watch city and stuff like that. Um, we have another, uh, the next meeting scheduled July ninth, um, at the annex. Um, I spent some time this morning and passed out thirty, I think flyers to all the businesses and stuff. Um, advertising that so we can get some more interest and have some folks show up and get the ball rolling on that.
What time will that be, chief?
Seven PM. It'll be at the annex July ninth. Yep. Um, and one of the things that goes with that is years ago, they had, um, I think it was through grant funding, a lot of, um, towns had actual neighborhood watch signs. Um, there are signs that we can purchase that are about forty-five dollars a piece that, that are your average, kinda like no parking size sign. Um, so I'd like to, I'll probably get with Jamie or, or Jeff and maybe do some research and see, um, you know, if there's anything he has in his budget for signage or anything like that. Then maybe we can start out and get eight or ten of them that we can put in, you know, the entrances to town and stuff like that. And then as this progresses, there's opportunities for, you know, individual neighborhoods or those involved with the program to do some fundraising and stuff like that if they wanna purchase signs specifically. Uh, you know, to put on their street or their block or something like that. Um, so that's going good. Um, I also got us registered on August seventh, two thousand eighteen. I'd like to have permission to use the square for what they call national night out. Um, there's hundreds upon hundreds of communities that, that do that program every year. Um, and it's just a community night out, um, for mainly law enforcement in the community to get together and, and have a good time. We're gonna have a, try to schedule a barbecue and just fun stuff, some, uh, the inflatables and stuff like that with the kids. We're gonna get with the folks that do our hot summer nights and see if we can coordinate all that together, so.
I'd say that's okay as far as just, as we ask everybody just to coordinate and make sure it's not conflicting with any other events. Council okay with that?
Fine with that.
What date did you say?
Uh, that'll be August seventh. I don't quite have a time for that yet. That'll, kinda have to wait until we get things. It is pretty hot.
It is council meeting?
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we'll, uh, start it right after council meeting then. Uh, that's, that's the national date, so I guess we'll just have to.
We can adjourn the council meeting and go.
Have a hot dog and come back.
Re-sets for a hot dog.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I got is, is we did, um, we said I mentioned, I think the last council meeting or the one before about the cops hiring grant. That's, they still haven't opened that yet. I don't know if that's, um, that grant actually closed last year on July twenty-first. So, um, it may be one of those that they've advertised that they're never gonna open. I don't know. But if that comes open, then we'll be applying for that and see if we can get some money for that to, to pay for some, some per better.
Any questions for Adam at this time?
Chief, how it goes the, uh, search for a fourth officer?
It goes.
It goes.
Um, I, I guess I can address, I, in, in going out and putting out the flyers today, I had three separate people tell me they heard Charlie was coming back. He hasn't expressed that to me yet, so I'm not quite sure if that's coming from him. I don't know. Um, obviously, if, if he's not happy with the venture he took on, he would like to come back. We would definitely entertain that. Um, but we have applications out. Um, we've sent some out and we've also had some, give the application and fill it out and then call back and say that they've got other opportunities. There's, I think last I counted and yesterday, we got over forty-eight agencies in the state of Kansas that are all hiring right now, so.
Thank you.
Pretty competitive. It goes.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Brad? Where you going? Where you going? Fire chief, Mr. Sanders.
I don't have anything.
What, what is the status as far as the, uh, grocery store with the fuel tanks? Did they have you guys work on it?
Yeah. We started at three o'clock today and they were gonna probably keep going. It was gonna take about four hours a tank.
Okay.
So they were gonna do most of it tonight and then finish up in the morning.
Contractors had expressed interest in having us fill their fuel tanks so that, you know, of course they don't roll out of places. They're burying them and everything like that. Had asked if, if the fire department would, would again help with the water situation out there. And I didn't wait for a meeting to allow, you know, it, I think Jeff said thirty, forty, fifty dollars worth of water rates. I, I didn't think that was too big of a deal to help with the projects.
Yeah, and we've got meter on there. So we'll know how many gallons.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we metered it, so.
Okay.
It was pumping a hundred gallons every forty seconds. And they had twenty-four thousand gallons to pump, so it was gonna take a while.
Very good.
Also, they're gonna get a lot of water too.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Counsel? Okay. Moving on. City clerk, Jamie Getty.
Well, Jubilee's over.
Not because it's over. It was good.
Thank you, um, everyone that came out and I feel like it was pretty successful. Um, still pretty humbled about the response and, and the turnout. It, it was awesome, so. I'm not only proud of myself, cause I'm being selfish, but proud of everyone. I mean, it was a definite team effort and the city workers really came together. And we're gonna continue to keep that spark going. Um, we haven't fully announced it yet, but we are looking at doing a car show at the end of August. So that is our next project and we will be working on that and announcing that and having everything lined out. But for real business.
For city clerk section, not the community coordinator section.
Um, I brought over Davis's bill for, um, the digging and lowering, lowering the primary wire. And I just wanted to make sure before we paid that, that you guys wanted that taken out of, like, the one percent for the grocery store? Or if you guys wanted it taken out of somewhere else? Cause I don't believe we discussed that.
I would say take it out of one percent sales taxes. It's relative to that project and it is. If it's, if it's possible to do that.
Well, we set that for infrastructure and that would be part of infrastructure because it's very in primary. Correct, John?
It's actually, you can use it for anything. The way it was more good, but.
I just wanted to run it by you guys before I, since it's not mine.
I would be fine with it.
Okay.
Everybody, we're okay with doing that?
And then, um, our server is too full. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm gonna be letting Randy know that we're gonna do a sixteen gigabyte RAM upgrade. And it's gonna cost a couple hundred dollars to give us a little bit more space, I guess, on the computer, so.
True.
That'll be happening soon too. And I think that's it. I'm not gonna wait.
Jamie. Questions?
I am really on vacation.
When, uh, next time when we have executive sessions, can you click on their note? Who asked for them, please? Okay. Appreciate that. Okay. Um, who requested, requested by?
Yeah.
On the agenda?
Like I, Mark asked us earlier, there's no wronger way, right way to give an agenda. So council wants that information.
I would appreciate that. Anything else for Jamie? Okay. Moving on. City superintendent, Jeff Williamson.
The only thing I have is that Thursday, Jason and I will be going to Hayes to meet with Greg Wright and the guys from Midwest Energy. Our contract comes up first of January or first week in January or something like that, so. They've got some ideas to, uh, throw out. I don't know whether any of it is cost saving or not, but, but all the member cities that use Greg, we're all gonna meet with Aaron and Robbie on Thursday, so. He'll be up there for a good share of the day. I'm on vacation too, but that's the way it works, so, anyway.
Jeff, do we need to think about, because I know, was it Midwest that worked with us on electric when Dylan shut down? Do we need to be paying attention for what, what it's gonna take come the end of the year, extra energy wise?
I'm gonna talk to Greg about that. You know, of course, this year it won't be so much, this year's already budgeted, but next year's not. Um, I'm gonna sit down and talk with him a little bit based on what the knowledge that I have from what's come out there is about what we're looking at for load, so, um, yeah, it'll get discussed.
Didn't Midwest drop it where we didn't have to pay that one?
Yeah, they did. They gave us some consideration when we dropped that. Of course, I'm pretty sure they're gonna wanna bring it back, you know? But, uh, that'll be a deal between Greg and, and us and Aaron, I'm sure, so, but, um.
I just don't wanna be caught next year that we're.
No. No. No, cause it could happen.
Paying trouble for something that we didn't have on the contract.
Yeah. Yeah. And by, and by January, you know, when the contract comes up, we'll kinda have a feel for what's happening too. And then, you know, I'll just make a point to him that we're coming back with something that's three times as large, but more efficient, but still, you know, there's gonna be some pretty good load there, so. We'll see how we come out on that deal.
I just know how a power company will work. If you don't plan ahead, they will take advantage of you in a.
They have a tendency to.
The amount that you can contract it for.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
And I don't wanna be in that position.
Yeah, where we're not in a peak shaving mode anymore, that makes it a little tough, so. We'll discuss it. See what we come up with, so.
Anything else for Jeff? Moving on. City attorney, John Beverlin.
Uh, the first issue is square, I think is yours. Was it filed? The deed wasn't filed yet?
Yeah.
She's in possession of the deeds of issues. So it hasn't filed.
I had that for me to discuss. I was gonna give the good news.
Hey, you're not supposed to talk about anything that's down here. That's for later. You're supposed to talk about stuff pertaining to.
I have.
John, come on.
I asked for a, uh, executive session to discuss water and rattlesnakes, so, so that's for later, but that's all I had in this condition.
Anything for John at this time, except for what's below there?
No. I had a question, John. Um, one of the last meetings that we talked about the meeting minutes. We've been getting complaints about them not being posted and you'd said something about unofficial meeting minutes being posted. Can we get that done?
You just put unadopted in like a watermark.
Okay.
Just drag.
Yeah. Can we start doing that list? Because there's been a lot of people that have complained on this. So if you would, please, I'd appreciate it.
And you can tell everyone that the office is open to come in and see minutes at any time. They're in a notebook ready there.
Okay.
As far as publishing them, are you saying like submit them?
Put them on the website. That's what the websites are.
Or put it on the website. Does the paper take those and publish those for free? County pays for that. I know the county publishes theirs. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Nothing else for John? Moving on. What? Nope. You good? Are you good? Are you sure? Okay. Moving on. Mayor report. Uh, really the only thing I have is this letter from the league municipalities stating basically what, uh, our Senator Mary Jo Taylor and Representative Greg Lewis have done for us and how they have supported cities in this past legislative session. It was addressed to me, but I thought I should make copies and share it with you just so you can see what's, kinda what's going on. And if you're talking with citizens and going, well, nobody cares about me or, or whatever. You have a little bit of information here that you can look into and refer to them on specific issues. Other thing I received, um, a thank you note from, on behalf of USD three fifty, Superintendent Josh Meyer, uh, sent this over and I'll read it out loud here so that everybody listening, uh, from home can hear it. It says, "Mayor and council, I want to commend the city of St. John for putting on a great Jubilee celebration. I know city staff and others were very hard to pull it off. They deserve a huge pat on the back and more. Makes me proud to be a part of this community, Josh." So that has been the thought from a lot of people, so, uh, you know, there's always opposition and everything like that. But I think a lot of people saw that this was, this was a big deal and, and the crew pulled it off, so. It was very awesome.
Heard nothing but a lot of positive comments.
Absolutely.
Jamie, so kudos to you and your crew and everyone.
Alrighty, that's it from me. If anybody has any questions. Moving on to old business, handbook update.
So basically on that, I sent the committee the handbook and then, um, forwarded John's email of his recommendations. And I don't believe you guys have met yet, so.
Basically, my thought was is, well, I communicated with Jamie and she said that John had more changes potentially to the handbook? Or were those final changes?
Well, it, it's more of like, I think, um, wording, just different wording, so.
I'd like, there's, you know, sometimes one term is used this way and another term is used that way. I would just go through and make clerical, final clerical.
Okay, so final, okay.
Legal lease.
So basically, committee needs to get, get, get together and review those final.
After everybody's done. I mean, even after the department heads.
Sure. Okay.
Cause I know what you're trying to say. I just want, want it to be clear so somebody's reading it.
Right. Exactly. And you can't misinterpret it. Okay. Okay, we'll have that ready. Here within the next week or so, we'll get together on that. And then at that time, will you then review the handbook again? Or will we make, make changes, the final changes and let council review those? And then you're gonna make the final cleanup?
I'd let council review and, and decide whether they're going to make, well, we can do it one two ways. I can do that and then let council review and make decisions about whether it's going to be amended or changed.
And then do the final cleanup and approve it. Okay. Okay. Very good. Just so we understand the process. Very good. Uh, moving on to the square. Handle that.
No, we didn't. Hey, the square's ours.
Very good.
Okay. Feel better now?
Just send the final bill. That's a joke.
I was gonna make one up, but I didn't wanna create enemies.
That's okay. Alright. No other old business. Moving on to new business. I would like to jump to football field and track lease to school first on the list. Cause I know this isn't gonna take very long.
So, uh, the school did send, uh, this lease over to John, so he has reviewed it. Um, basically, the, I mean, the, the lease that we currently have expires July first of this year. So, uh, Josh just kind of typed something up. Um, it's basically just a summary of the entire lease saying that they're gonna lease it for twenty more years and it will come due July of twenty thirty-eight.
Yeah, you're just changing the effective termination date of the agreement for twenty thirty-eight.
I had an opportunity to speak with him today on that and I asked, I said, well, did, I mean, is, is there a need to do it every twenty years? Do you wanna do it longer? Do you wanna do it shorter? Do you want it to renew every year or, you know, or just continue with this? And he said, well, you know, there's, there's been issues with people not paying attention to certain things like that and then losing track of it and don't know what anybody did, which of course, that's what we ran into with the square situation. So I don't know if there, cause in twenty years, is everyone on this board still gonna be here? You know, to remember what had happened. I mean, certainly things are on file, but that was one concern that was raised, so. Josh was fine with doing the twenty-year lease if that's okay.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to do it. Otherwise, you can rewrite the lease to say that it shall renew automatically every five years unless. This is the simplest. And he already had it done when I reviewed it, so.
Right. I would just go with the.
Yep.
I need a, I need a motion.
Yeah, to, to, again, you're.
To adopt the renewal of the lease agreement with the school.
To adopt and renew the release, the lease agreement presented to us by the superintendent.
A two thousand and three lease agreement.
Second. Motion is second. Doran Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Fine. Moving on to Fourth of July. This is something that comes up every year, folks, and middle of the week. Kinda need to put it out there to advertise for people to know how many, how many fireworks they can buy this year, so. Need to decide the dates that we're gonna allow people to blow them off. I've entertained good comment and bad comment, as I'm sure all of you have.
What date does the fourth land on?
That's on Wednesday. So generally, you know, there's been times where we've allowed multiple days. We've done the day of before. I mean, your recommendation as far as. I mean, your recommendation as far as staff and weather conditions, I mean, we're still a month out.
We, last few years, we haven't ever, we haven't had any problems, any problems.
That's what I kind of figured, so I just throwing that out there.
Even the dry year, we didn't, didn't seem to have any problems. Not to say that we couldn't this year, but.
You know, I'm always the person that, I have a lot of family that comes in from out of town and they're not coming this year because they, it's, it's on Wednesday and they can't come out, they're not coming out for one day. So they're gonna come out the weekend before and we're gonna barbecue and we're either gonna blow fireworks or we're not, and so if we're not, we're not, if they are, we are, I mean. I know that's a lot of the situation for a lot of people, I don't know where council stands, I've heard a lot of people say fourth only. I've heard a lot of people say maybe the evening of the third and, and then all day on the fourth, so people can have two evenings worth, because most people do a lot of night works. That's the big thing, so.
I would just suggest maybe, you know, on the third at noon, till midnight if they want to shoot them, and then all day on the fourth.
Like seven AM to midnight?
Till midnight.
What's council think about that?
I think, why are we regulating holidays? We're gonna regulate the Fourth of July, can we do Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter and everything else? I mean, really? I don't know.
They're gonna shoot off fireworks wherever they want to, anyway, so.
We have Christmas for the whole month.
Isn't it because there's a city code against shooting off fireworks in city limits?
Well, according to the state of Kansas, you can, you can do whatever you want.
Correct, we can just get rid of the city code. That's why you're regulating it, it's just because of the city code.
I don't know about you, I don't enjoy getting people coming up to me and telling me all this stuff and saying I do this and that and complaining.
I really don't care, I don't care what you guys do.
People are gonna blow them off whenever they want to anyways, so.
I don't really care, makes no difference to me.
Well, I just think it's ridiculous that I.
That everybody complains about it.
I'd, I'd entertain a motion to allow them to do them the third and fourth from noon to midnight and then seven AM to midnight on the fourth. I have a motion on the table.
Second.
Oh, you can't make a motion.
Well, I entertained a motion and he's so moved.
Oh, okay.
Wake up, John.
So moved, second.
Sorry.
That's how we get things done, it's all good. It's noon to midnight on the third, seven AM to midnight on the fourth. A motion is second on the table.
What did you say it was on the third?
Noon to midnight on the third and seven AM to midnight on the fourth.
So noon to midnight from the third to the fourth. Noon to midnight on the third and then the fourth.
Then seven AM to midnight on the usual, right, right, right. So a motion by Mercedes, second by Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four one.
What'd you want it all week, Jim?
Saturday to Saturday.
You should have made a motion.
There's already one on the table. Alright. Are you amended?
You can make a separate motion.
What was that, three?
I have a tent in every apartment.
I don't really care when they do it, they're gonna do it whether we allow them to or not, so.
It's gonna happen no matter what.
Okay, no other new business? I'd entertain a motion for the ten minutes to discuss personnel matters and non-elective personnel, what's, who's, who's offering that one up?
Diane, council, attorney, superintendent.
Read that off.
Ten minutes for the city council to recess into executive session to discuss individual employees' performance pursuant to the non-elective personnel matters. Section to the includes mayor, council, city attorney, and city superintendent.
To reconvene at eight twenty-five? All in favor?
All opposed.
Carries, reconvene at eight twenty-five.
I need the meeting back in order, please.
Meeting back in order.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very good.
I'd make a motion for a five-minute discuss personnel matters of non-elective personnel.
To include?
To include council, mayor, John, city superintendent.
To reconvene at eight thirty-one?
Sorry.
Any other, any, any discussion?
Second.
Second there. All in favor? All opposed? Carries, here in standing.
We just did that one for the county.
Call meeting back to order at eight thirty-one, I just want to gather consensus as far as we had made prior meeting the ability to finish work out of the grocery store, I'd like consensus that we allow our crew to continue going back out there and doing work as long as our, our needs are met.
Absolutely.
Everybody okay with that? I need, I, I need to hear words, I can't, I can't just go off of.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, alright, it's not gonna.
Any objections?
If there's anything like that going, it will change rapidly.
John, I have an objection as far as returning our city crew back to the work out there on that project, is that an issue? Do we need to? How's that handled?
You mean if it happens?
No, 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 yeah, there was an objection here.
Oh, I think it's just majority rules.
Okay, very good, moving on.
I'd make a motion for a five-minute executive session to discuss attorney-client privileges.
Issues related to the rattlesnake creek water issue.
What, he said five minutes to, what did he say, council and mayor and attorney?
Council, Diane, it's stairs. To reconvene at eight thirty-eight?
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carries five oh.
Now that I kind of provided that opinion, I, we can.
Call meeting back to order at eight thirty-eight?
We can discuss outside of, or in, you know, I mean, do you guys want me to do like a something fancy, do you want me to do a letter, do you want me to suggest what Carolyn wants to do as far as how to present it? I mean, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't have a ton of time on this stuff because the entire finding was several hundred pages and I wasn't gonna read.
Right.
I read the executive summary, I wasn't gonna read the entire thing.
Sure.
And I maybe have an hour total on phone calls with people.
Yeah, I would certainly say that we need to go the route of, hey, listen, we know how this is gonna affect us and we want you to know that. Not on the for or necessarily against, but the, we're aware of the situation and just remember us, I think that's kind of where we're at.
If I could suggest, I'd do a draft and maybe have it reviewed by Jim and one other council member before I submit to Carolyn and then to Josh and then, I don't know what you want me to do with Stafford County, I mean, I, I get, I exchange messages with their attorney by voicemail. So I don't know if, if you want me to reach out to Stafford County or whether.
I wouldn't, that's me. Yeah, I'd just go. I'd just go there. Yeah.
City school.
Yeah. Economic development.
City school.
Economic development, perhaps, who wants to be with Jim on that, ill reviewing that?
I don't care, I can, whoever, whoever wants to, I don't care, don't make any difference to me.
Right, you guys want rock, paper, scissors, or Marshall, Jim, you work with John on that issue?
You have to throw Jamie in the mix because she's gonna have to give us the information.
Yeah, Jamie's gonna be.
John, John's got my email.
Homing pigeon.
Back and forth, okay, with no other business.
Oh, you have email?
I'm happy, I'm happy. JimDoran46@gmail.com.
Can you speak up a little bit for the camera?
That's not how old you are.
I was told you did.
Well, it's privileged information. No other business I entertain, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, motion is second, Brian Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries on standing, follow.